Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board's first public forum on our new zoning initiatives to revitalize North Main Street and to bring Winchester into compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. So we're running this via Zoom webinar this evening. So if you have questions you'd like to have answered, please type them into the Q and A. And that will go to Taylor Herman, our town. He's not our town clerk, she's our town planner. And he will respond to them. So I want to welcome our panelists who are with us, as they call them in Zoom land, Emily Innes of Innes Associates and Michael Wang in Form and Place. I'm Dieterius, Chair of the Planning Board. And I want to thank you all for joining us this evening. So tonight, we will be hearing from two experts who are working with us to implement our new zoning, Michael Wang of Form and Place and Emily Innes of Innes Associates. I'd first like to give you a brief introduction of how we got here. So in the spring of 2015, Town Meeting approved some sweeping revisions of the Center Business District, Center Business District zoning bylaws. Some of those changes were to ensure economic vitality in the town center, enhance its commercial and residential tax base, improve its livability and aesthetics, promote and protect historic resources and the small town character, encourage smart growth development, and promote more diverse housing alternatives to accommodate the needs of our community. After that effort, the Planning Board worked with the Winchester community to create our 2030 Comprehensive Master Plan, which explores visions for what Winchester might be like in 2030 and steps on how to get there. The Board has long recognized that the mixed commercial and residential districts along North Main Street need similar attention to what was given to the town center. And the Comprehensive Master Plan gives us much more direction on how to do that. And old timers will remember that there were a couple of decades ago, there were some work to introduce incentives for redevelopment. But those didn't really produce the change that was hoped for, and the Planning Board decided to take a fresh look. And to that end, we've been working with Michael Wang and John Ruffo of Form and Place for the last couple of years to re-envision the streetscape and the zoning to extend to North Main Street, the same goals that were laid out for the Center Business District, namely enhanced economic vitality, improved livability and aesthetics, smart growth development, more diverse housing alternatives all along a major transit corridor in town. And so we will be hearing from Michael Wang about that effort. On a different note, in 2021, the Massachusetts Legislature passed the MBTA Communities Act, whose purpose is to spur creation of new housing to help deal with our crushing deficit of residential units, which has led to the current situation, which you may have all read if you've been following the Boston Globe's new Spotlight series on housing in the Boston area, where to purchase a median-priced town in the Boston area now requires an annual income of more than $300,000. So the MBTA Communities Act requires municipalities which are serviced by the MBTA to create districts around MDTA stations which allow the construction of multifamily housing without requiring a special permit. Special permits can significantly increase the time and cost of development. And even when a project has passed all of the checks and gotten approval, the financial environment can have changed dramatically and the approved housing may be further delayed or not built at all. So as we'll hear later on from Emily Innes, the Act has specific requirements for each community to meet. And as the Board worked earlier this year and considered how Winchester could meet them, we recognized that both the Center Business District and the lower part of North Main Street would play important parts in our compliance models, our compliance efforts. So we asked Form and Place and Innes Associates to work together on a comprehensive vision and zoning for the North Main Street corridor and our MBTA compliance districts. So, next slide, please, Emily. So this is our first public forum, our first discussion, and we'll be having another one in person at the Junk Center on the 21st. I think you should think of tonight as sort of like an introduction to get your to get your mind thinking about the issues. And think of November 21st as the time you can corner us and ask us your toughest questions will be in person, we can't escape. So we should have time for questions tonight. There's a lot of material to go through. We want to have you, give you folks a chance to think about it. We've also been joined on this project by a group of town residents on our new zoning review advisory committee. We've had two meetings of those folks. They will serve as an independent voice to advise the Planning Board on zoning and design guidelines. We had two introductory meetings in October. We'll have a next meeting, our next review meeting in November, December, unless of course we call some before then. Our goal is, and they are going to advise us on zoning and I think zoning and design guidelines, I think I said that. Our goal is to bring zoning to Town Meeting next spring. And before then, we will have further opportunities for discussions with the Winchester community, more meetings of the zoning review advisory committee, as well as meetings with other boards and committees. Those will all be open to the public. We will consider all of your input as we draw up the new zoning, which we will finalize by early to mid-February next year, which is the deadline for getting it to Springfall, the Springtown Meeting. And at this point, I think I'm going to turn it over to Michael Wang of Form and Place. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Diab, and good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Michael Wang with Form and Place. I'm also joined by my colleague, John Ruffo, who will be attending the in-person meeting and helping to facilitate an open dialogue. As Diab said, we hope to have more opportunity to really dig in on Q and A. And Emily, why don't you go ahead and move forward? I was going to give a brief introduction to talk about the overlap between the MBTA Communities Act and the North Main Street Initiative as we've studied to date, but Diab did such an amazing job of encapsulating that that I think we can just jump right in. In fact, I know a number of you who are on this webinar this evening have seen these slides and I think we have I've worked hard to try to condense this down because we have a lot of ground to cover tonight in trying to get an introduction out on both of these initiatives, but hopefully we'll have some time for some back and forth and then can really get into that on the 21st. So with that, I think I'm just going to jump in and this slide indicates sort of the five general topics that I'd like to revisit tonight. Again, putting it in the context of previous studies that have initiated this effort, understanding a little bit more about the connectivity with the MBTA Communities Act, talking about density goals for the corridor, how much and where is this appropriate? What does it look like? There's been a lot of focus in some of our studies we've done over the last couple of years on the section of the corridor south of Clark Street between Clark and Skilling, because that falls within the half-mile radius from the MBTA station. But also just understanding how different site parameters, size and shapes impact the housing typologies that are, that can be utilized to achieve these different density goals. And then we'll look briefly at some of the variables that will help try to achieve the density as well, and not just purely density, but also desired development patterns. I think it's a very important aspect of this. And part of that will be refined by design guidelines and standards, not dissimilar to what you have in the CBD today. So Emily, next one, please. So just really briefly again, as Diab mentioned, the Winchester 2030 Master Plan does identify a number of evolving opportunity areas in town, and two of these are number four and number five are are along the North Main Street corridor, the GBD II and GBD III I've highlighted there on the lower left. And you know, essentially calling out for opportunities to increase economic vibrancy, walkability and aesthetics of the corridor, as well as the right type of development, as Diab alluded to, and I'll just carry on here. As part of the Master Plan, as many of you know, there's also the accompanying Action Plan and which outlines, you know, implementation strategies, assigns responsible parties, in this case, the Planning Department, Department and Planning Board, having an important role in thinking about the North Main Street corridor and outlining sort of the general vision and goals, which you see highlighted in larger text there. You know, for making zoning changes, in this case, to allow for higher intensity development. And this involving mixed-use residential and the adjustment of various zoning criteria such as building heights, wider use of wider range of uses, et cetera. Next. So in 2021, the MIPC did a follow-up study on the corridor kind of forwarding the ideas put forward in the Master Plan. And again, sort of calling for a reconsideration of some of the zoning approaches along the corridor. You can see the GBD II and GBD III called out here, overlaid on a map that I'm sorry. My phone is ringing. That's the joy of technology these days. In any case, overlaid on a map that talks about the potential for change along the corridor, near term and long term, and making recommendations that that look to promote ideas about increased density and how you do that through perhaps flexibility in parking standards and other site design strategies that would improve the aesthetics of the corridor. Next. So very briefly now, number two, just looking about how the North Main Street corridor can complement the MBTA Communities' goals. There's been discussion about the impact of the MBTA Communities Act on the CBD, and I know that there's been careful consideration given to that. And so the GBD II adjacent, obviously just to the north, presents a marvelous opportunity for increased density in an area where today the zoning criteria really sort of present a missed opportunity. So the opportunity for a variety of housing typologies to serve a diverse demographic, I think, is particularly present there in conjunction with the opportunity to enhance a gateway to the town center. Next. So these images obviously represent the sort of southern portion of the corridor today and seen obviously in comparison to you know, the core here, quite a different environment. And so this is just here to to emphasize how building and site design can impact the definition of the public realm and the points that I've outlined there in terms of building siding in relation to frontage definition and streetscape definition, but also building scale, the proportion of buildings and their height and massing to the size of the street they're fronting on is critical. Having active ground floor uses can go a long way towards creating an engaging streetscape. And that goes hand in hand with relocating parking generally to the rear of sites and thinking carefully about access to parking. And obviously, the two images at the top, you see examples of curb cuts that extend hundreds of feet, and these exist in a number of locations along the corridor. And then that's the type of thing combined with above-ground infrastructure that would go a long way if it were remedied to creating a positive pedestrian environment. Next, please. This is these are some charts and maps from earlier this year that were produced by JM Goldson, who did initial work on the compliance model for the MBTA Communities study, and will be updated. You'll see an updated version of this tonight from Emily. But all this is just to emphasize the fact that the GBD II, which falls into both of these initiatives and is highlighted on the map on the right in the sort of teal color labeled District Four, that the zoning criteria that exist there today, which are essentially the inputs for the model, including things like building height limited to three stories and parking requirements of two parking spaces per dwelling unit, those types of variables all go into determining sort of the unit capacity that can be achieved on various sites here. And you can see highlighted in yellow and surrounded by the circle there on the left on that chart, that the current dwelling units per acre in the GBD II are 12, and in fact, Emily will show that it's in fact less than that for the revised compliance model, but the point being that that is a very low available density per your current zoning as compared with even some of the other districts that are exist today that are included in the chart there. So next. So defining density goals. So here again, over the course of the last year and a half or so, we've been working on a number of test fits along the whole extent of the corridor. We've done a great deal of focus south of Clark because of that proximity to the station. And we've looked at the you know, as you move up the corridor towards the Wilburn Line and Cross Street, what, how does the character potentially change today and how do people envision that being in the future and that that might determine, you know, variations in the criteria moving forward. And again, I will do a quick review on some of the housing prototypes, but let's carry on here, Emily, in the interest of time. Very quickly, this graphic on the right shows again that half-mile radius. You can see essentially reaching out to Clark Street, the North Main Street corridor is the dash red section of the plan there with the arrows going from Cross down to Skilling's Road. And these are some of the primary goals that have been identified in our work with the Planning Board. Also reinforcing the previous studies, looking for more density, especially south of Clark, and considering ideas about incentives for ground floor commercial to create that vitality, the vibrancy on the streetscape that everyone is looking for. A lot of parallel goals as well in the public realm, but let's carry on. This is a graphic that sort of talks to the character of the corridor today. And it's sort of my interpretation, if you will, and sort of thinking about south of Clark and the fact that you have much larger deeper parcels there, again, in that critical radius. But opportunities for mixed-use development with ground floor commercial and a real chance to improve the public realm here. This area is you know, as we showed in the previous pictures, has a lot of vehicular-centric uses and is not very pedestrian-friendly. The middle section of the corridor is quite unique in that it has very narrow parcels, many of which have been considered historic assets. It provides a buffer to the neighborhoods to the west. It does also have the an important intersection with Swanton there at Bellino Park. So they're very different sort of grain, fine grain to this section of the corridor. And then as you move to the north or to the left on the graphic here, you get into some larger parcels again with commercial uses today that, you know, present some interesting opportunities for redevelopment, but also as your first impression as a gateway working your way towards the CBD. Next. Again, I'm going to try to go through these relatively expeditiously, but I wanted to give you a sense of some of the the test fit studies we've done over the last year and a half or so, basically looking at existing parcels along the corridor as well as consolidated parcels so that we could test a broad range of parcel sizes and shapes and to get a sense of utilizing both mixed-use approach as well as a multifamily approach. You know, what densities could you achieve with certain aesthetics? So the next, please. And what we found was, and these are numbers highlighted in yellow here that refer to the section of the corridor between Clark and Skilling, so the southernmost section. What we found is with adjustments to a few variables, such as you see highlighted in blue up at the top there, such as changing the parking ratios to be the same as currently exists in the CBD as opposed to what exists today in the GBD II and GBD III, which is two parking spaces for dwelling units. If we went to the simple adjustment to parallel what exists today in the CBD, it really opens up a tremendous amount of opportunity for increased density. And as opposed to having the 10 to 12 units, dwelling units per acre that the model revealed for that area, you now see that even with keeping it at three stories, we are able to achieve densities around, you know, almost 30 dwelling units per acre. And without a mixed-use component, that gets even higher, and I'll show you that in a second, but next, please. So again, we expanded the study from our initial study at the southern portion to include all the way up to the town line here. And again, this just provided us more opportunity to look at a range of parcel sizes, and you can see we were able to identify a range of of unit capacity that could happen depending on particular variables in play. I think what we learned that was particularly interesting was smaller parcels, just by their nature, and it makes sense, yielded a lower density dwelling units per acre, more in the range of, you know, 10 to 25 units typically depending. And then the larger parcels allowed opportunities for, you know, getting up to 30, in the 30 to 50 range without too much complication. Next. So I'm not going to dwell on this, but again, I think what's fascinating is this, and Emily has spoken about this as well at our last meeting, and I think it's in your slide deck as well today, Emily. So it's something that's quite relevant and helpful, I think, visualizing what multifamily means, which often you know, scares a lot of people, but it's this whole missing middle housing between single-family, which takes up so much of a part of all of our communities and the sort of mid-to-high-rise world. And I've broken it down really into three or four typologies here, which start with sort of almost a single-family style units to townhouses and then moving on to apartment style. And I've got just a condensed version of, if you go to the next slide, just to show you a graphic of that. On the left is that sort of four units within a single-family style home. And if that, for example, fits on a quarter-acre lot, which is pretty typical here in Newton where I am, you know, that results in 16 dwelling units per acre, just as a frame of reference. And when you move to the townhouse typology and whether it includes ground floor mix of use or attached units that are vertically oriented, you are, you know, can easily get into the mid-20s, approaching 30 dwelling units per acre. As you see in one of the test fits we did on parcel three earlier this year. And if you go to the next slide, just trying to get through these. The next slide shows an example of a larger prototype, an apartment building prototype. This one on the left is in Middleborough. It represents 44 dwelling units in two buildings on one, on an acre and a half site. And one building being three stories, one being four stories. I think you could argue is still appropriately scaled and aesthetic that could be considered to be compatible with many similar communities. And but that represents just about 30 dwelling units per acre. And then when you get to the right-hand side here, you're looking at sort of larger prototypes, multifamily or mixed-use prototypes with larger building footprints. You can see an example of what that would look like in the upper right there in the rendering, showing a four-story building with ground floor commercial. You know, the three-story versions of this test fit, which we did down just south of Clark, yielded about 35 dwelling units per acre. When we got rid of the ground floor commercial and bumped up the height of the building to four stories within the same footprints that you see in that plan, we were able to approach, you know, in this case, we had 57 dwellings per acre. So there's quite a range of density that you can achieve here depending on the typologies and the site configurations. Next. Okay, just to quickly touch on this before we wrap this up and invite, instead of hearing me talk at you, invite some comments back. So how to achieve this density in, together with the desired development patterns, I think, you know, we've talked about the variables that, you know, have the most impact. And of course, there are many others that can further tweak that. And if you look at the next slide, please. Here's just a quick synopsis of you know, ideas about what you, we might, I would love to debate with everyone and get everyone's feedback on, you know, thoughts about some critical dimensional criteria in the GBD II and III. And you can see here, for example, today, both of those districts have a three-story 45-foot height limit. And if you, you know, go to, for example, the GBD II, maybe a 55 and three and a half story approach, that obviously has the consequences for density that we have been looking at in those previous slides. There are lots of variations on that theme. You can introduce additional incentives if you're trying to achieve that ground floor commercial component, or if you want to have a higher percentage of affordable units, there are a number of ways zoning in many communities that have been written recently are incentivizing these types of aspects and by allowing perhaps another half-story or another story of height. And I want to also point out here again, the parking ratio component, I, as a starting point from our test fits, we were using the CBD ratios, as I mentioned. But if you look at the most recent zoning bylaws put forward by the city of Newton, for example, for their village centers and MBTA Communities' response, as well as Arlington, which just passed their MBTA approach, both of those communities are going to zero parking spaces per dwelling unit. And so I think that's become almost the norm now in these transitory development contexts. So for example, we could consider, and again, this is the kind of thing I'll be looking for feedback on, we could consider doing zero spaces per dwelling unit in the GBD II, which has that proximity to the station, and then as you shift to the north and away from the core, you know, you might perhaps shift to one space per dwelling unit. So there's a lot of room there for discussion and thinking about the character of the corridor that's trying to be achieved. Let's carry on here in the interest of time. And lastly, I just, I wanted to just finish with the talk, a little introduction to design guidelines and standards. If you go to the next one, Emily. This, of course, is a summary of the guidelines that you have today in your CBD, which talk about site planning strategies, as well as the elements of building form, getting all the way down into the details. And if you go to the next slide, please. You know, in a lot of our recent work, having written design guidelines now for the city of Newton for a couple of major development projects, you know, we often look at design guidelines at sort of three scales, often the neighborhood scale, in this case, the corridor scale, moving down to the site planning scale where you're dealing with issues of building site relationship setbacks, parking where you're dealing with issues of building site relationship setbacks, parking, location and access. And then down to the building scale where you're getting into the details of building massing and facade design, how to create a vibrant ground floor and just in general overall architectural character. So these aspects are, I think, maybe critically important, particularly as you move towards a more intense approach to development in certain parts of the corridor potentially. I'm going to stop there.
Thank you, Michael. I think we had planned on having a time for some questions. We've had a couple of questions about how the MBTA districts work with first floor commercial. And Emily, you're the expert on this, I think. Do you want to rephrase what you said? I don't know if everyone has access to the question and answer. So if you could maybe rephrase your statement, your response.
Absolutely, and thank you. So first of all, just a quick introduction, Emily and our tremendous associates. And I'm an urban planner and designer. Our firm has been doing a lot of work on the MBTA Communities Act. So the question was, how does development in these areas work with the MBTA regs that prohibit ground floor commercial? And I just want to say, that's a really common misperception. And so I'm not surprised to see a question on that. We get that in every community. In fact, the MBTA Communities Act does not prohibit ground floor commercial or mixed use within an MBTA district. It does prohibit making that mandatory. So in other words, you could have a multifamily building on lot A and right next to it, lot B. You could have a mixed use development. Both of those would be allowed under the MBTA Communities Act zoning. Do you, you in call that the idea of an overlay district? And the underlying district would still be commercial. That is another way of doing it, which is keep the existing base zoning, the zoning that's already there, but put something called an overlay, which essentially sits on top of that zoning and allows a property owner a second choice. And then finally, a follow up question was you could provide incentives to encourage first floor uses commercial, and that's absolutely true. So a common idea is to allow, say, multifamily as of right as a three story building and then allow a bonus density of a four story building with one of those, with the ground floor story being that active ground floor commercial use that Michael mentioned earlier. So there are a number of different strategies that we can talk about during this.
Yes, and just to follow up on that, Emily, that's, just to clarify, that's why the North Main Street Initiative is really looking at potentially amending the underlying zoning so that that opportunity exists, whereas the MBTA approach would be an overlay so that you have sort of two approaches to development.
And now you can see why we're doing this at the same time, right? It's because we're both working in the same area, but thinking about different strategies for each area.
Thank you, and we have another question which popped up. Oh, it's a comment from Hank Lynn, who wants to reiterate Michael's point regarding Clark's extending to water swanton in the GBD two, the west side of North Main Street, parcels of a narrower depth, where new development could potentially impact the back butters who are predominantly residential, yes. That, yes, we, Main Street is like a whole series of slightly different ecosystems that we're going to have to look at carefully. Are there any questions for Michael?
Can I, can I add just one response to that question from Hank? And I think I tried to allude to a little bit. Those parcels in that middle section of the corridor tend to be quite narrow. And I think the shape and size of those parcels, even if they were consolidated, is going to lend themselves to a certain housing typology. So you're not likely to get the larger formats of multifamily housing. Or you wouldn't be able to accommodate those on those sites. So I think you're likely to fall more towards those four units, single family residential or townhouse type approaches, which I think would be an appropriately scaled liner between the Main Street and those neighborhoods, just by the nature of the sites themselves.
Thank you. And that reminds me, I should let the experts answer these questions. Okay, any other questions for Michael? We have a question from John Serbeer. How many guests are participating?
Thirty-one, thirty-one on my list.
There are thirty-one. We do have some duplicates. People are coming in twice. I see a lot of people from our zoning review advisory committee here, some planning board members. And I'd say maybe a handful of people who are known names, but not associated with those groups. So we have a 31 total, including those four of us on the panel. And is there another question? Let's see. How is this meeting advertised? That, why don't we take that question at the end, just so that we can move on with Emily's? We will, we will keep that there, Ellen. So why don't we move on to Emily's? Do we have more questions? Yeah, thank you.
Up there, I think there is one more question on Michael's piece. So, Michael, does zero parking mean that there would be no parking spaces provided to the tenants?
Right, so a couple of aspects of that, zero parking means that's the minimum parking required. However, anybody, you know, trying to lease or create a usable space would make a judgment based on, you know, what they feel is appropriately needed. There are many communities, in fact, today are putting maximums on parking requirements. So for example, in some of the MBTA community bylaws that I've seen, there might be a zero minimum, but there might be a one and a half space per dwelling unit maximum, because a part of it has to do with, you know, trying to provide more opportunity for in dense, intensive, intense development as well as open space that's desirable. So that's just the way things have gone lately.
Yeah, I think one of, one of the things that we've talked about is that when you're looking at building things close to public transit, say the train station, not everyone who's going to live in that building will require, you know, two slots, which is what we require in the residential areas of town. Because they have chosen to live in a denser, more walkable area because they can get the public transit easily. So not everyone in the, you know, in this building will require two parking spaces. So when you put in parking spaces that aren't used, it's really a waste. So the idea is to give the developer flexibility so that, you know, you can, if a tenant doesn't need parking space, then that parking space could be used for another unit who might need more. So the idea is to create flexibility. Because parking spaces are expensive.
Yep, and the master plan and other doc, you know, studies, you know, sort of refer to, well, the, I've lost my train of thought, I apologize. Oh, I know, I'm sorry. It talked about the desire to provide a diverse housing typology so that you're accommodating perhaps young professionals or empty nesters who have different lifestyles and they have the access to amenities and public transportation at their fingertips there. So the typical sort of parking requirements that you might find in other areas wouldn't necessarily be appropriate here.
All right, I think that's us for questions for the moment. So I'm going to take over the conversation for a little bit. So I've been working with, I think I'm up to 20, 18 or 20 MBTA communities at the moment. I've been partnering, you can see on the screen here, the logo of RKG Associates, Eric Halverson and I have been partnering on working with these communities to help them with all aspects of becoming compliant with the MBTA Communities Act. We have created a presentation that is for, that we've been doing with town officials, city officials and town staff and city staff. That presentation is about an hour and a half long. We are not doing that presentation tonight. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you a high lever overview of the MBTKA Communities Act, what it is, what it isn't, some of the requirements that we need to think about, and then how those requirements apply to the town of Winchester. So let me start off with, as was mentioned earlier, it is a new law, chapter 48, section 3A. This applies to all 177 of the designated MBTA communities. Some of you have made the, maybe heard the number 175. Fall River and New Bedford became MBTA communities later. So that's now at 177. So the key thing is that each of these communities must have zoning. And I'm stressing zoning because it's going to be important for our conversation later. Zoning that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is provided as of right. And we're going to talk about what those mean. That district cannot have, or districts cannot have age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. The districts must have a minimum gross density of 15 dwelling units per acre. And part of the district in those communities that actually have transit stations, so rapid transit commuter rail, part of the district must be located within a half mile from the transit station. Now, there's some critical reasons why this law was passed. And the key piece is that Massachusetts has a housing shortage. And that housing shortage is leading to a number of problems. One of those is affordability, that many, many households cannot actually afford the housing that they're looking for at this point. And that is across a lot of income levels and it's across a lot of age ranges and household sizes. And because households are not finding housing that they need, the Commonwealth is frankly at a disadvantage in competition. So other states are receiving the benefit of people who have been working in Massachusetts, educated in Massachusetts, grew up in Massachusetts, that are moving elsewhere or are moving farther and farther away from their jobs and having a longer commute because they can't live near where they work. That is problematic for all of us. And finally, from a planner's point of view, which of course is my point of view, but placing, placing housing near transit is good policy. And it's good policy for a number of reasons. Generally, not always, but generally, there is infrastructure existing near transit. There is at least roads. There may be in some communities sewer and water. Some of the adjacent communities may not have that. And some of the more suburban to rural commuter rail communities may not have that next to their transit station. But in general, it is closer to infrastructure. Also, because you're encouraging people to live within walking distance of a train station, there are likely to be fewer cars on the road all at the same time. So it's good from a transportation, overall transportation policy as well. And if we can place the housing near jobs that people can walk to from a planning perspective, from an infrastructure, from a climate resiliency perspective, that's even better. But let's talk about what the MBTA communities is not, because there's a lot of misunderstanding and misperception out there. And so it's important to understand. So this isn't a mandate to build housing. In other words, the state hasn't said, you town or you city have a certain number of units that you must build. And because it's not a mandate to build housing, it's not a housing production target. I'm going to show you some numbers later about what Winchester's responsibility to zone for is. That is not the town's responsibility to produce. The idea is that the private market will be responsible for producing the housing, not the town. The town is responsible for zoning and that comes into a lot of the conversations we're going to have. It's also not restricted to addressing affordable, only affordable housing needs. It is possible to put an affordable housing requirement into your MBTA communities district, but this is not primarily about housing, about affordable housing. In fact, some communities view the guidance on affordable housing as too restrictive for their needs. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And it's definitely not a one size tool to, fits all tool to address housing needs in a community. It is a portion of a community's housing strategy, but it is by no means the only tool. It's also, and this is a hard thing for communities, I think, to hear, it's not viewed as optional. This is a mandatory requirement. All MBTA communities must do this. The Attorney General, and I'll speak to this later, released a letter stating that fact earlier this year. So who's required? So here are our 177 MBTA communities. You can see in the text that certain of them were designated at different times. The 14 that initially had it, there were others that host it, but joined later. And some of the communities, the served communities, actually a butte city or town, or it's been added later. You can see there's actually some gaps here, a couple of communities that don't have to comply. Boston doesn't have to comply, but for the most part, pretty much all of the eastern side of Massachusetts is having to comply. Winchester is a commuter rail community. That means you, along with the adjacent communities, must be in compliance by December 31st, 2024. All communities that submitted an action plan are considered to be in interim compliance at the moment. And as long as you are making good progress on your action plan, which you are, because we are having these meetings, you stay in interim compliance, but you must be in full compliance by December 31st. The rapid transit communities are going first. They have to be in compliance by December 31st of this year. And the adjacent small towns, which are the smallest communities, have the longest lead time. So that's December 31st, 2025. So if you don't comply, this has been a huge question from many communities. What happens if we don't comply? What are, what are the issues there? So I, again, from the planning perspective and from thinking about community values around housing and community needs around housing, I like to point out this top one, which is it's a loss of an opportunity for a community to talk about housing. Housing supports, you know, obviously it supports where people live. It supports the social construct of the community. It also supports economic development. So how and where communities locate housing has a lot to do with, say, for example, supporting a declining downtown, which has happened in many smaller communities, or supporting an employer coming in, which is a topic for a community that I'm working on. It's also an opportunity to say, look, we've done a housing production plan. We've done a master plan. We've looked at housing affordability in other ways. We've looked at the types of housing we need throughout our community. We see that there are gaps. Let's use this process of talking about the housing that we need to see how the MBTA Communities Act can help us meet that. Now, there's a stick to it as well. I did mention that it is mandatory, it is required. So the state has a stick if you don't comply. And the first of those is the loss of access to grant funds. So there are three that were mentioned in the initial legislation. That's the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund, and the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, which is a huge program and allows communities to address all sorts of infrastructure need, including infrastructure that helps with new desired development. Recently, the HLC, which is the housing, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, added another 13 grants. And a lot of these are critical grants for many, many communities. And then finally, I mentioned that the Attorney General provided advisory guidance in March of 2023 that says all MBTA communities must comply with the law. Talks about the fact that there, there could be civil enforcement action and goes on to talk about the Fair Housing Act. I will say there is one community, the town of Holden, where their leadership stated a couple of months ago that they were not interested in complying. The last I heard, somebody, a third party, not the state, had actually sued them under the Fair Housing Act. I don't know where that is now, but just be aware that people are looking at what towns are doing. I mentioned that MBTA communities is a tool, it's not the tool. And so my client, my colleague, Eric Halverson produced this slide for our joint presentations. And it talks about the different housing needs a community might have from the unsheltered up to market rate. And you'll see that while there are a number of different strategies, a number of different programs to address unsheltered, extremely low and low income, moderate income and workforce, really, the MBTA Communities Act is assisting with the moderate income workforce. And that obviously depends on the affordability levels the community sets and market rate, primarily market rate. So that's important to know where it fits into the housing strategies. And I also mentioned that zoning is not housing production. So we'll go into this in a little bit more depth, a few slides on, because it's, it's an interesting concept to wrap your head around. But just know that when you talk about housing production, there's a number of factors that come into it. You need the land, you need to own the land, which means somebody You need the land, you need to own the land, which means somebody needs to sell you that land, to be willing to sell you that land. You need to have a market that shows that there is demand for housing, and that is obviously cyclical. You need to have financial feasibility. Certainly, this is a difficult time for anybody looking to finance a development because the interest rates have been going up. That does tend to put a damper on housing starts. You need available labor, and so you have to look at how much housing, how much construction in general is going on in an area and how much labor is available to build it. And you have to look at how desirable a community is. Is it a community where a developer is going to want to invest and do that work? And also, is it friendly to developers? Is it something where the developer wants to work as well as, you know, wants to, to put their money into a project? So there are a lot, there's a lot of interplay between these factors. That means that I think there's been a fear in some communities that if they zone it, the housing will start tomorrow, you know, the day after they zone it. That's not true. It could be over a couple of years, or it could be over ten years. It just depends on the community, the market cycle at the time this happens, and how much that community can absorb in terms of new housing. There are certainly some communities that can absorb more than others. So let's talk a little bit about the compliance requirements, and this is the part that takes, you know, we could go a lot of depth. So I'm going to skim over the high level. I really hope that people come to the November twenty-first meeting where we can talk in more detail about how this works, but I don't want to keep you on here for an hour and a half. So there's a couple of compliance tests that we need to do. There's a compliance model out there that uses GIS, Geographic Information Systems, to figure out the land area. I'm going to show you what the town's been working on to date in a little bit. There's capacity. So you have a geographic area, and on that geographic area, you have a calculation of how many housing units can fit. That's a capacity. And then you have the zoning, which is the written tax, the regulation or the bylaw that allows that level of cap- capacity within that particular land area. So you can start to see that these three things are going to interrelate with each other. In other words, if we change the location of the area, we might want to change the zoning, depending on where that location is. If we change the size, that's going to change the amount of the capacity. If we're going to change some of the zoning, like the lot size or the heights, that's also going to change unit capacity. So what we're really going to be talking about is now, a little bit now, and a lot on November twenty-first, is how do you think of the interplay of those components? I also mentioned that in your case, you think, need to think of transit adjacency, and then all communities need to be, think about something called excluded land, which we'll talk about in a minute. So first of all, what are your land area requirements? So you have to have a minimum land area of thirty-seven acres. Your developable station area is four hundred and forty-six acres, which means in that half-mile radius around the state, around the transit stations, you have a total of four hundred and forty-six acres. That's obviously not even close to how many acres are within the town itself. Of that, you need fifty percent of your total district area has to be within the station area. Now, if you were to have a minimum district size of thirty-seven acres, that minimum district size would be eighteen point five acres. So to be located in the station area, you also need a minimum contiguous district size of eighteen point five acres. Now, if you were to have a minimum land area, if you were to zone for a hundred acres, just because it makes the math easier, if I do a hundred acres, then the percent of the district to be located in the station area is still fifty percent. So you would need to locate fifty acres in the station area. Your minimum contiguous district size would also be fifty acres. So the fifty percent is on the total district area. You'll see I continue to use half of thirty-seven acres, just so we keep it in mind, but that asterix means that it's really fifty percent of the total district area. Now, I mentioned excluded land, and this is important to understand for the calculation of the unit capacity, but also in thinking about the location. So the state defines three types of land. Developable land, which is land that could be developed for housing. Excluded land, which is land that cannot be modeled for unit capacity. So this includes most public land, rights of way, Title V setbacks, Zone A for surface water protection, hydrological features, so open water is not developable, and protected or restricted open space. There's also something called sensitive land, and you can model sensitive land for unit capacity. But the state calls it out because for good planning purposes, a community should know where their sensitive land is. They may have certain values. So for example, I work in some communities that have active agriculture. Active farmland is considered sensitive land, so we call that out and use it to think about where we want to locate the districts. So just remember, developable land can be developed on, sensitive land could be developed on, depending on community priorities, and can certainly be modeled for unit capacity. Excluded land cannot be modeled for unit capacity. I'm going to show you maps that show you what yours is. So having moved from land, so land is our base, now we're going to use that land to calculate the unit capacity. In other words, the number of units under the zoning that could be actually created under that zoning. You have a minimum unit capacity of one thousand two hundred and twenty units. And same thing as with the land area, fifty percent of your total unit capacity needs to be within your station area. So whatever your total is, you know, it's going to be a minimum of one thousand two hundred and twenty. Again, for the sake of the argument, say it's two thousand, a thousand of that has to be within your station area. You also have the same minimum density requirement as everybody else, which is fifteen dwelling units per acre. I will say for the, before we jump onto that, land area doesn't have to be one single district. You can have multiple districts. If you do have multiple districts, then I need to think about how that geography works for that minimum contiguous district size and for the area located in the station area. But just know, for your purposes, if you do that, then your average minimum dis- density requirement is fifteen dwelling units per acre. And what that allows you to do is to have a higher density in some areas and a lower density in other areas. And that is important when we start talking about the missing middle housing. As Michael said, we both have the same diagram. Thank you to a firm called Opticos, who created and popularized this discussion. It's very helpful to all of us. So when you're thinking about where to put your density, and the fact that you just need to average out to fifteen dwelling units per acre, it means in areas that already have a lower density, you could place a lower density. And areas that have or that you would like to have a higher density, you could place that higher density within the same missing middle housing, and then the average together can be fifteen dwelling units per acre. And then again, this is something else we can continue to talk about, both tonight, but also on the twenty-first. So another common question that comes up is why can't we count existing developments? We already know we've got these projects in the pipeline. Are we just built two hundred acre, two hundred units last year? Why can't we continue to calculate, count those against our minimum requirement? That's because when you use, when you look at zoning, zoning treats all lots, just like this blue blob on top of all the parcels here, it treats them as unbuilt. It really doesn't care what's on them now. We do. We, as a community, we as planners, we care about them, but zoning sees them effectively as a blank lot. Zoning doesn't know whether it has mixed-use development on it, whether it has these little duplexes, whether it has this mid-rise building on here. So zoning just treats that there. And what we're talking about today, what we're talking about with the MBTA Communities Act, is zoning. So think about zoning as a future possibility or a future option. It's basically saying, with this piece of land, somebody could come in and make a change under the zoning. The zoning allows for that certain level of change. It's not talking about what's on the land there now. So it's a measure of possibility. It is not a count of existing units, and therefore, it doesn't matter what existing units are there in terms of the capacity. It might matter for our planning purposes, but not in terms of the capacity. So when we get to the zoning, and you can tell, for anybody who might have opened the compliance model on their own, I'm leaving out the inner workings of the compliance model because we'll be here all night, but I'm certainly happy to answer questions tonight or to talk about it on the twenty-first. But let's jump to the zoning. So in addition to the district tests and the unit capacity tests, there are some other restrictions that come into the zoning. So they don't affect the model, but they do affect how you write your zoning. And so I've already mentioned that you cannot mandate an age restriction. Because the multifamily has to be suitable for families, you cannot regulate the size of units, the bedroom size, the mix of the bedrooms, the size of the bedrooms, the number of occupants in the unit. And we've already touched on this, you cannot mandate mixed-use development. You can allow it, but not mandate it. I mentioned affordable housing requirements cannot exceed ten percent of the total units offered at no less than eighty percent of the area median income. Now, some communities are looking to do more than that. You can submit an economic feasibility analysis to HLC if you want to go above that ten percent or below that eighty percent, and that, that deeper affordability is very important to some communities. But you do have to prove that it's not going to cause financial hardship for new development. So as a summary, your GIS, your Geographic Information Systems, is helping you to identify the amount of land and the location of the land. The rest of the model, the Excel portion of the model, coupled with the zoning, helps you identify the capacity requirements, and the two of them together help you identify the density requirements. And so as we move forward with the process, we're going to be looking at all of those. So JM Goldson, as Michael mentioned, a fellow planning firm, did some additional scenarios earlier this year and tested them for compliance. They actually did three scenarios. We're just going to talk about the third tonight, but during the ZERAC meeting, I actually talked about all three, so feel free to, to jump back to that. So this third scenario looks at the Central Business District, the General Business District Two, the Parkview Condominiums RA one-twenty special permit, and the North Wedge Pond Palmer Lake. So the results that they came up with at the time was that this exceeded the requirements for the total minimum land area and the multifamily unit capacity. And for both within the station area, it provided compliant districts entirely within the station area. And it included, excluded, sorry, excluded some specific parcels in order to preserve commercial uses on the ground floor in the CBD. So what that tells me is that you have some flexibility as a town to talk about how you work with your current zoning to make sure that that happens, but that you're there in terms of capacity. So this is the map that JM Goldson prepared, and I wanted to call out here is where we've got the overlap with the work that Michael and his team are doing in the North Main Street corridor. So you see that's our District Four and District One, District Three up here, and then District Two in this area here. Now, this map, not only is this map not settled, the next few maps I'm going to show you are also open for discussion. Love to hear your thoughts tonight. Certainly looking forward to hearing what you have to say on the twenty-first. These are not set boundaries yet. So we've taken, just, Innis Associates have taken some input from the thinking that's gone on at the Planning Board. I think there might have been a few thoughts on the ZERAC as well of how to start thinking about, maybe we change these boundaries. Are there parcels that should be in? Are there parcels that should be out? So we've done another set of maps that updated some of it, and we've done another run of the model, and there's some minor changes in there, but you're still meeting the requirements of the area. So, so this is the Central Business District. This is the new outline of the Central Business District. And you can see that there's some parcels that have been carved out at the moment. I do need to go back and check the contiguity requirements. Some of these might be a little bit off, and it's one of the reasons it's in flux. So looking forward to hearing what you have to say on that. This is the North Wedge Pond area. That hasn't changed too much. There's some finessing that we could do around the rights of way, but that's essentially the same. Parkview is also essentially the same, but you can see how that looks. And here is that, gee, this should actually be GBD Two, again, the overlap with the North Main Street corridor. Now, I mentioned excluded and sensitive land. So this next map shows you all of the districts in relationship to each other, but also calls out the excluded land. So all of this green area that you see on here is excluded land. It is not being modeled for, for the unit capacity. So in general, you want to make sure as little excluded land is in your districts as possible because that is affecting how many units, basically it reduces the number of units that you can have, and it also reduces the density. I did mention sensitive land as well, so this can be modeled for unit capacity. If you have it in your area, it counts. But you may or may not want to have this in your district, so that's something else to consider. And we can certainly break it down. This is the, state provides both layers, both the overall layer that you're seeing now, where all of the excluded land or all of the sensitive land are put in together. They also provide a breakdown. So if it becomes important to the discussion to understand exactly what's making up the excluded land or exactly what's making up the sensitive land, we can run those maps for you. So this, these are the inputs that, based on your existing zoning. So that's important to understand, that primarily we were looking to your existing zoning, and you can see the inputs for each of these. These all go into the compliance model. They are applied using the formulas to the geography that we just looked at. And what you come up with is this. So here are your minimum requirements in the, in the left here, your thirty-seven acres, minimum multifamily capacity of one thousand two hundred and twenty, density and the area within the transit station. You can see your dis- district acreage is over twenty acres more than you need, which is terrific. You don't have to worry about meeting that. You do have a minimum multifamily capacity that is more than you need, density that's more than you need, and a hundred percent of your parcels are within the, within the transit station areas. So that's great. It gives you some flexibility, since it's all some flexibility during the discussion. I think some communities are trying to figure out just how to get there, and others are saying, hey, we're either there or we're close to be there in terms of the model. How do we tweak this to meet our community's needs for housing? And I think that's going to be part of the next stage of our discussion together. And then finally, just so you can see how it's broken out, right now, the Center Business District is really, and the RA one-twenty are really carrying the other two in terms of the density, right? So that's ability I talked about earlier, of being able to have a lower density in some areas, have a higher density in others, and then end up being, in your case, over the average required density. So with that, I'm going to stop here and see if there are any questions on the MBTA Communities Act or next steps, or what we might be talking about on the twenty-first. I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Emily. We have a bunch of questions queued up. We have a, and I think this one might, the first one might be for Michael. So why don't we take that one? It's a very long statement from Lance Grendzback. Lance says, there is a high demand for housing today, but are we now or will be, be looking at the economic for commercial retail space along North Main Street? Unless there is a reasonable understanding of the future demand for commercial retail space, it is possible that rezoning will miss the mark. For example, we will zone for too much mixed use when there is no demand for small-scale mixed use, or conversely, we will zone for too little mixed use for the wrong size of mixed-use space when there is a high demand for future commercialized space. I ask because in the past, we have generally missed the mark in forecasting the market demand for retail commercial space in the Center Business District and North Main Street.
Would you like me to respond, Dab?
Yes, please. I give you this hot potato.
Oh, thank you so much. I, I will say that, you know, the action plan in the master plan, you know, does actually call for a residential and commercial market study would be a useful component of, of sort of implementation strategies. That's not something we have on the table now, as I understand it, Dab, but, but, you know, in, in reality, I mean, if you think about, you, you zoning for mixed use, it's, it's really going, it's sort of like the parking thing in a way. It's, it's, it's the demand of the market is going to sort of drive what actually happens there. And we're, we're trying to zon for flexibility, both for, for multi, diverse multifamily, as well as trying to incentivize, you know, ground floor vibrancy. So I don't know if that answers the question. I don't know if that answers the question specifically, or if anybody else wants to add anything to that.
You know, I, I, I hear you, Lance. I just, you know, I think the, the economic environment has changed so dramatically. I know you pointed out before that, you know, part of our approach was, didn't, you know, take into account the fact that Amazon would rise and do a number on small retail shops. And I don't know how much, how good forecasting would be even in the next five years. So what I hope is that the zoning we come up with is flexible enough that it would be able to respond and that we treat this as an ongoing effort so that when we see that the zoning isn't responding to the market, that we can, we can tweak it or change it as required. And what's important, I think, is to get a really good foundation for that future. And I think that's what we're going for. I don't know if that answers your question, Lance. Please ask another, if you'd like to follow up. We have another question from Ellen Spencer, who is back to Emily's presentation of what funds the state would withhold from towns which are not compliant. And the question that Ellen has is how many of these grants does Winchester utilize? And Taylor, I know that you've been starting to work with town manager. Sorry, I forgot.
Beth, yeah. So of, of the grants that, that, so Beth and I are still looking back into the history of grants that have been utilized by the town. I don't remember exactly which ones Emily brought up on the slide. But it's a significant portions of the ones which we would not be able to attend, to receive, we have applied for and have received in the past. Beth and I are working on a full, you know, a full list of it, but it's taking a there's Winchester has received a lot of grants in the last five, 10 years. So getting that, that, that list is, is happening.
Emily, did you want to add something?
No, just say that a lot of communities are doing that same exact exercise as they're going back through and seeing, you know, how many of these grants did we apply for over the last 10 years? You know, how our five years, depending on the community, how much would in theory we'd lose? And it's turning out for some communities to be a significant number. So not surprised to see that you all are on top of starting to look at that.
Okay, our next question goes to with from Peter Pirani, who says, could or would the land on the corner of Swanton Street and Washington Street be included? And Emily, if you could go back at least a couple of slides to one of the maps, one further back, please. I think one more.
One more, one more.
No, that's too close.
Yeah, I'm not actually sure it's on the map. I did through the miracle of modern.
Oh, it is, it is on this one.
Okay.
It is on this one. And if you go up to where Parkview is, and you follow that street that's sort of horizontal, but going to the east.
Okay.
And then that major intersection is Swanton and Washington.
Okay.
That's where the town owned parcel is where we would be developed. There's a bid to develop affordable housing there. And the problem with that parcel is it is not five acres in size. And so I think it's only a couple of acres. I actually don't know the exact number, but it's not five acres. So unless we could connect it to another lot on its own, it can't be used.
Actually, you brought up two problems. The first one, absolutely true. You have a minimum district size of five acres that you have to meet. So yes, you can have more than one district, but they all must be at least five acres. And then you have to have that one large district that's half your total area. But there's another problem, which it's, if it's town owned, that means it is publicly owned land, which means it is excluded land. And you would not be.
It's, it's, I believe we have an offer. It will be changing. So I believe there's a, there's a PNS, which is dependent upon all, you know, I think it's one of these things. I think they're still in their due diligence phase. So I apologize for not bringing that up.
Not a problem. You've allowed me to talk about one of the features of the model that otherwise we wouldn't actually hit, which is if you have exactly what you have, which is a piece of town owned land that is in the process of being disposed of for housing. So not just, you know, we think it would be a good idea to dispose of this land of housing, and that way we can count it. But it's actively in that process. You have an offer, you have a purchase of sale, you're actively disposing of it. You can override that parcel, you know, and whether it's the whole parcel that's being disposed of or a portion of it, you can override it. You have to put a note in the compliance model that says, we're overriding this because we, the town, are actively disposing of this for housing. And then you can model the unit capacity. So it still has the issue that it is under five acres. But were you able to create a district around that, then you would be able to include it. So thanks for bringing that question up.
Okay, we have another, we have a question from Ellen Spencer, who is following up to Lance's question. She's concerned that if we can't mandate mixed use, we will be dependent upon the goodwill of the developer. I'll leave that up to you folks.
Yeah, I mean, I'll jump in first, and then Michael, you can take over. From the perspective of the MBTA Communities Act, I think Hank mentioned this earlier, the idea of creating a density bonus. And so you're, if you, what you want is to include mixed use in the area, then you would need to structure a bonus of some sort that provides an incentive to use the mixed use over the multifamily. And we can certainly, you know, if that is of interest to the town, we can certainly talk about how we would do that, either under the overlay, or here's my segue over to Michael, or under the North Main Street corridor zoning. So Michael, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, I mean, that's exactly right. And it can't be mandated in the MBTA communities, but that's where the sort of underlying zoning comes into play. And, you know, in providing incentives, such as, for example, if you provide a certain percentage of the ground floor, and that percentage can can, you know, facilitate or incentivize in certain ways as well of commercial use on the ground floor. But for example, if you say, okay, you can add a fourth story onto a mixed use building as opposed to being limited to three or three and a half stories with purely multifamily. That, that's the kind of thing that could very well stimulate that kind of development.
Okay. So we have a question from Richard Rohan. What about Waterfield? So Emily, if we could go back to the close up map of the center business district, please.
It's one too much. Here you go. Do you need me to zoom in a little bit more?
And I, yep, that would be great if you, right down in the bottom, right south of, and so you'll see, Rich, that Waterfield is included. So Waterfield is the sixty unit development that's on town land. It's being leased by a well, it's in there, but I might be excluded, but it is being used for affordable housing. Here's a good question for you, Emily. So it's it's town owned land, which is being leased for, I believe, a ninety nine year lease to develop sixty units of housing on, if you look down at the lower right corner of the area that's in, that's where my cursor is. No, no, it's actually inside of the border of the land.
This one?
So that's the town common, go south.
Yep.
Right there, right there. That is the lot, which is being used.
So let me just check, because this does not have excluded a land on it. So let me see what that looks like when we go to our excluded land. Okay, so here's an example, everyone, where we can see it up close. So see, your town common is excluded land, but so is this area. So what we would need to do on this is I would need to talk to the state about the fact that it's being leased and does, you know, what are the conditions of the lease? What are the conditions of the development? And say, you know, is this something that we can override in the model and count it for capacity? Because right now it will not be contributing to capacity. So glad you brought that up and happy to follow up with the state on that.
Okay, thank you, Rich. We have a comment from Lance, who says the three A regulation revision, this is the revision to the regulation, governing mixed use zoning is a poorly thought through mashup. So Emily, do you want to, do you want to give us a lowdown on that revision that came out just a couple of months ago?
Yes, in August. Great question. So there were a lot of concerns from communities who wanted to be able to preserve their mixed use areas or areas that they would like to be mixed use. There have been concerns from communities that want to preserve commercial activity or commercial centers, did not want those to necessarily be turned over to all multifamilies. So what the state has said is that you can have a mixed use district. You can calculate the capacity of that mixed use district and take a portion of that capacity and set it off your overall requirements. Now, the model to allow you to do that was just released in October. I saw it myself, so I haven't actually run through with a community that's wanted to do this yet. But the key thing is that your mixed use area, your mixed use district is not the same as your MBTA communities district. So again, let's say you have a mixed use district that counts, that has a capacity of a thousand. You can count, I believe it's 25%. So you can take 250 units from that mixed use district and off in the unit capacity of that mixed use district and offset the unit capacity in your MBTA communities. So say, your MBTA communities requires 750 units. You've offset it by 250 units from the mixed use district. You now only have to zone for a capacity of 500 units. So a little bit tricky, but in terms of thinking about the math and thinking that through, but as I said, they only just released the model, so I haven't yet tested it with the community to see the practical impact.
Okay, we have another question from Michelle McCarthy, who is not a consultant, member of the planning board, a member of the Z, wait, I'm sorry. She wants to know how many people on this call are not actually members of the ZRAC or the consultants? And we have actually lost a few people. So we are down to, I can't read my screen is too short. We are down to 23 people. We were at 27. So at present, let's see, I see one, two, three, four, five. I think there are five people who are not members of boards, et cetera, who are currently on the call. And then the other question that
Maybe.
I guess that got answered. That got answered, sorry.
The other question we might answer as part of that is Ellen's original question about how is the meeting advertised? I think that's sort of going side by side of people's minds.
Yes, that is. So why don't we, why don't we answer Ellen's question from earlier this evening? Taylor, you are advertising person. Can you, can you describe the efforts we did to advertise this?
Yep. So we've advertised this on the Winchester calendar, Winchester News, Winchester Facebook, Winchester Town Managers Newsletter and WinCam.
Okay, so that is that one. We have a question from John Serbeer, which asks, what is the rationale for not including that portion of Thompson Street located along the railroad tracks? And I believe if you could go to your Zoom and view the map of the center business district, it might be easier to see it.
Okay.
Yeah, so when we zoom in and we look at Thompson Street. So that area is an area that the planning board thought was to, we want to maintain first for commercial in the in some of the more active commercial districts, which is what those are. And the concern that the board had was that if we made this an overlay district, if someone came in and wanted to turn one of these lots into a commercial, or sorry, into a residential only structure, we would lose sort of the vibrancy of having street level commercial. So it's certainly possible to add them. I think that's a value judgment that people have to look at what it is that makes the town center a vibrant place to live. And what's the balance between, say, incentives to create commercial at ground floor versus excluding some of these lots so that we can maintain the existing zoning, which is commercial on the front floor, the ground floor. So that's a judgment that, you know, can be revisited. And that's, that's something that the town needs to talk about is what value do they place upon the commercial, permanent commercial placements in the downtown? So we have a question from Hank Lynn, who says, Emily, can you briefly clarify excluded land and sensitive land? I believe which includes privately owned land on which development is prohibited to protect private or public water supplies, including but not limited to Zone One well held protection areas and Zone A surface water supply protection areas. And in our proposal, do we have sensitive land included?
So answer to the question first. Obviously, I have summarized it here, so you're not looking at a lot of text, but let me read out, this is the exact definition of excluded land. I was able to pull it up from the guidelines while you were reading out the questions. So excluded land means land areas on which it is not possible or practical to construct multifamily housing. For purposes of these guidelines, excluded land is defined by reference to the ownership, use codes, use restrictions, and hydrological characteristics of mass GIS, and consists of the following. All publicly owned land, except for lots or portions of lots determined to be developable public land. All rivers, streams, lakes, ponds, and other surface water bodies. All wetland resource areas, together with a buffer zone around wetlands and water bodies equivalent to the minimum setback required by Title V of the State Environmental Code. Protected open space and recreational land that is legally protected in perpetuity. For example, land owned by a local land trust or subject to a conservation restriction, or that is likely to remain undeveloped to functional or traditional use, for example, cemeteries. All public rights of way and private rights of way. Privately owned land on which development is prohibited to protect private or public water supplies, including but not limited to Zone One wellhead protection areas and Zone A surface water supply protection areas. And privately owned land used for educational or institutional uses, such as a hospital, prison, electric, water, wastewater, or other utility, museum, or private school, college, or university. That's the full answer. In answer to the question about sensitive land, so this is a sensitive land map we have. You can see that there's a little bit of sensitive land here. A little bit of sensitive land here. There's a bit of sensitive land coming along here and a bit of sensitive land coming throughout here. I would need to break it down further. I'm guessing that it's probably, well, I don't want to guess. I'd be happy to break that down further into which of these categories it is using the more detailed GIS layers. And just again, we are given these layers by the state. They created all of these layers prior. And just again, we are given these layers by the state. They created all of these layers prior to releasing the compliance model so that all hundred and seventy seven cities and towns would be drawing from the same information. So, but as I said, if it becomes critical during this conversation, or can't do it tonight, but critical during the overall community conversation about this, I'm happy to break that down into a different map.
I think that those are more likely to be the flood hazard areas.
That was my guess, actually, but you know.
And a large chunk of that sensitive land in the Center Business District sort of thing is already developed. That's where the stop and shop is and all. So that's already fairly well developed land. So I don't think it's, it's been in use for a long time. I think we're just worried about flooding, so.
Yeah. And frequently, communities will have something like a flood hazard overlay or a floodplain overlay that puts some additional restrictions on. I do check those just to make sure that there's nothing that prohibits the multifamily use, but most of those are drawn from the initial same language and are covering how to think about development within the floodplain, rather than completely prohibiting it. So.
Okay, we just have a few more, and then I think we're approaching the end here. We have an emphatic no from Ellen Spencer, but I'm afraid, Ellen, I don't know what you were, what you were responding to. But then there's a follow up saying we also have to be sensitive to retaining the character of the town center. I believe we, we were going to have a lot of help from the zoning review advisory committee to help us with that. And I think we all know that Winchester Town Center is something that's very valued in town. And so I think that's on the forefront of a lot of people's minds. Lance Grenzback is pointing out that the sensitive areas shown are primarily floodplains. So it's good to have affirmation there. And Hank is thanking you for your deep dive into sensitive and excluded lands.
Very welcome.
So I think, let me, let me go through here and I think we've answered all of the questions in the queue. Again, if you have any further questions that we haven't answered, please email them to planningboard@winchester.us. And, oh.
I almost forgot our November twenty first meeting.
Oh, no, 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 we didn't forget. We didn't forget. Did you want to say something?
No, no.
Yes. So we are having, our next live meeting will be November twenty first, or I should say our first. Well, we're all live. Our next in-person meeting will be on November twenty first, in person at the junk center. This is going to be a place where we can mingle and talk, and we will have some structured presentations as well. This is where we really wanted to have everyone come out and dig in. We will have a, this, a recording of this meeting is, WinCam is recording us. Thank you as always, WinCam. And we will get, WinCam will have it up. And we will have a recording of this meeting as well as the two Z-RAC meetings up on the planning board's website. Ellen has chimed in saying, let's make a real effort to reach out more people for the next meeting. You are, we are with you on that, Ellen. Thank you. And Sumiya thanks us. And I think I would like to thank Michael and Emily. Thanks to Taylor Herman Town Planner for helping us organize all of this. Thanks again to everyone and Richard Leaf. Richard Leaf is the, is our, the planning board's liaison with the Chamber of Commerce. We're going to follow up Richard for that. Thank you for showing up, Richard. I'm sure I've missed someone already. Thanks to the Z-RAC members who are here tonight. Thanks to all the other board members. And we will see you all again in person on November twenty first. And we might slip a Z-RAC meeting in there, which we'll see, we'll see. Just because it's a long time to the next Z-RAC meeting in December, but we'll let you all know. We'll give you real good heads up on that, just in case. Okay, okay. Have a great evening, everyone, and we will see you all later. Bye.
Bye.